If I could have everyone's attention, my name is Doug Holland. I am our current Vice President of Iroquois County Farm Bureau and on behalf of our Board of Directors, we want to welcome you here this evening. We thank you for coming out. We know it's a bad weather night for everybody, but this thing was kind of already planned. It's hard to counsel and reschedule something like this, so we just made the decision to go ahead with it tonight. And we certainly thank our candidates for coming out tonight. We are without Steve Ellis. Steve was not able to come tonight, but we do have five of our six candidates here this evening, and we certainly thank all of them for coming out and spending their time here. And I thank each of you for taking your time to come out tonight to learn more about these folks as they are running for a very, very important office, the Office of Iroquois County Commissioner. At this time, I'm going to call Jeff Sloan up to have our invocation.
Let us pray. Dear Lord in heaven, thank you so much for the stage you blessed us with. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to be here and be together tonight. Thank you for the safety of travel tonight and just ask you to be with each of us as we travel home, be with those people who had to be out tonight, and just give us that safety, if you will. Just ask that you be with us as we go through these questions and the thoughts about how our county is going to move forward in the future and just ask that your hand be in it with us. Just lead, guide, and direct us in all that we do and say tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Just to recognize some elected officials with us this evening, I think Sheriff Derek Campbell is the only one we have with us this evening. We certainly appreciate him coming out. And I'd like to give a big thanks for Nancy Keith, our Extension Director here, for helping set this room up and helping put this thing together. And Amy Dillinger is our County Liaison. She did a lot of work, too, and we certainly appreciate the work of these ladies. With that, just to let you know how this forum is going to take place, our candidates will give the questions ahead of time, and so they are prepared for the questions that we give them. Each candidate will have an opportunity to answer at least one question, be the first one to answer that question, and we will rotate these questions in and out between the candidates. With that, we'll get started. The first question is for candidate one, two, and three, and the question is, "Education is one of the core functions of our government. Do you believe our schools are funded adequately at the local level that provides a proper education for our children? Are there alternative sources of funding that could be utilized in the future for Iroquois County?"
Thank you, Doug. We can always do better as Iroquois County Commissioners, as people of Iroquois County. We should never take that for granted. We should also remember that we have not only the schools, but we have police, firefighters, EMS, animal control. As County Commissioners, we must make sure that we are adequately taking care of the whole county without putting a tax burden on the people that don't fix the accounts.
I feel like that we're doing all we can. The schools right now already get over fifty percent of our budget for the county's entire budget, the three educational entities. So what we're doing is working diligently with those systems, working on our workforce development, our choice programs to keep us competitive with the charter schools, trying to identify kids in middle schools and other areas that may not be college-bound so they're ready for the workforce. So we're doing a lot of innovative things, working with our schools. So I think they are funded to the best ability we can with available revenue.
The moderator, and let me just say, this is my first time doing this. The moderator that was supposed to be here is Bob Emin, and he counseled on us his last minute tonight, so I failed to let these candidates introduce themselves.
I was going to ask you about that.
We're going to start with Scotty and let him introduce himself, and then we'll go all the way down to Reagan.
I didn't want to make you look bad, but anyway. Guys, I'm Scotty Ground. I was born and raised here in Iroquois County. I went south out of high school, and then I went to Mitchell College, and then I went to Rowan Tech and come back to Mitchell College. I've been here my whole life. I do own Zoo Tastic Park, the largest church attraction in Iroquois County. I own a large business and a small business, man, and I am very good at conserving money. So, and would like to have you back.
Good evening. I'm Gene Howe. I am one of your current County Commissioners, also elected official. I want to tell you, I'm married to Dr. Howe. She's the Principal of Iroquois Stateful Schools. We're blessed to have five children. We attend Western Avenue Baptist Church. I'm a thirty-one-year law enforcement veteran, small business owner, and I said it's an honor and a privilege to be one of your existing County Commissioners. As County Commissioners, part of our responsibilities are, we have twenty-five county departments that we oversee and fund. We have nineteen volunteer fire departments that we help fund. We have three educational entities. We have to provide court space, probation and parole space. The two of our twenty-five departments that we help fund, or fund actually, the sheriff runs one and the rest of these runs the other. So I look forward to talking about that, and they do a great job.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Neder and born and raised in Iroquois County, lifelong resident, attended Mountmore and Raleigh, South Mitchell. Sounds like Scotty, you're in the same school system, I remember a little bit. My husband Mike and I raised our children here. Very proud to be a part of this. We've watched positive changes take place as we've grown our business. It has been an opportunity for me to be directly involved with our citizens. My daily activities allow me to have face-to-face conversations, hear the needs, see the needs, and be a part of so many local nonprofits that I have learned so many lessons and heard so many great things. And I am driven to be a part of this community, to give back, to help, and very excited tonight to be able to answer some questions, be here, and move forward with being a potential County Commissioner, working on giving a balance of growth and our low tax base. Thank you.
First, I want to thank Iroquois County Farm Bureau for hosting this. This gives us an opportunity to share a little bit about ourselves on a different platform. I'm Ryan Hergs. I've lived in Iroquois County for sixteen years. I went off to Little Ryan, went to Iroquois Stateful Schools, was at Lake Shore then at South, went off to Little Ryan, and I came back to Iroquois County. A lot of people are talking about our students are leaving Iroquois County. I was one of the few that came back, and I think we need to look at that and see it, getting students back to this county. I'm currently the Community Partnerships Manager with the Kannapolis Cannonballers, formerly Kannapolis Intimidators. They're giving me an opportunity to be in the community, working with groups, and my main priority will be Iroquois County with them. So this is a great opportunity and a great time for Iroquois County to make some change and progress our county with farming and with economic growth. So I'm excited tonight to talk about that, and I thank you guys again for the time.
Thanks to Farm Bureau also for allowing us to be here tonight and speak to you, tell you a little bit about ourselves and the folks standing forward. My name is Raymond Burnett. I'm married to my beautiful wife, Patsy. I have a son about twenty-seven years old and a granddaughter, six years old, that keeps me wide open. She lives with me and my wife full-time. I'm retired from Iroquois County. I worked for them for eighteen years, lived in Iroquois County for almost fifty years now. I was not born here, but I feel like I was. I've been here so long. My parents begged me to move back to Virginia area, West Virginia area, back in the seventies, not long after I moved here. I told them no. Had too many nice people down here that were friends with, and I declined, and I've been here ever since. With that, I'll turn it back to Doug.
Well, let Max change out a microphone there. Give us some feedback.
Nice down. Hold on a second.
Testing, testing, testing.
Testing, testing.
All right. Melissa, you want me to repeat the question?
Okay. Because we're addressing the education and the funding, so we'll go back to that question. There are three systems we look at the funding mechanism. They've got your current expenditure capital and your debt. And being in the business of, well, with dollars, you have to oftentimes look at how your funding is formulated. And on a regular basis, you're going to need to reevaluate until you look at how your funding is, and that should be held true as well with any business, school system, or just analyze your funding system. And it also mentioned about alternate funding sources. You know, we're going to look at making sure our kids have the skill sets, looking at programs that are in place in the schools, having our workforce ready to move forward with that. It has become competitive with the education system. In order to back our public school systems, we have to be aware of the corporate-funded private sector schools taking students away from our public education system. That is a key piece to keep an eye on and steering any dollars that are in our county that go to state level, steering back to our system. There's a lot we can look at with grant funding. There've been several in place. Harmony received one from the Farm Bureau. There are a lot of grants that are out there to continue to move forward with alternate funding with that source, and I've seen those in action in the school system. So, thank you.
All right. Our next question will go to candidate four and five, and the question is, "How do you feel about the current present use valuation program for farmland, and is it more of a tool to protect farmland or a drain on tax revenue of Iroquois County?"
Thank you, Doug. I think it's a positive piece. I think it's great for the agriculture business and also with the county. Agriculture being number one in the state and also being number one in this county, I think we need to continue with it. The only issue with that is our tax office. Recently, some farmers got reclassified and changed based on a map, on an electronic map. We can't do that. We have to look at what, we have to go back to the farmers. We have to continue the education on our taxes. We've got to continue our education on these programs so we're not losing these things, especially, we can't have our farmers lose money, and we can't lose money as a county. So we need to be beneficial to both. We have to also look at some tax credits. I think there's some great things that we could do with our legislators. Currently, some of our legislators are looking at a tax credit for equipment that is over ten years old. I think our county needs to push for that. Agriculture being our number-one business here, we have to be enrolling and legislating for our citizens more than just sitting here in the county. We have to get with our legislators and other legislators to make this happen, to get those tax credits for the people that are helping our economy here in Iroquois County. Thank you.
The present farm use exempt status, I think is an excellent program for farmers in Iroquois County. It provides an incentive for our farmers to continue farming by reducing the land tax burden on very large acreage farms and protecting our farmlands. I do not think it's a drain on our tax revenue here as it is providing the retained jobs and encouraging our youth to have an interest in agriculture field. It also adds expendable income to the workforce population in agriculture. I also would like to see the program revisited to address certain issues, burdens on the states later on in the years. I agree with Ryan on the tax credits for farm equipment. Being married into the farmer's daughter, married her, I know a little bit about farming and agriculture, and I know the strain that my brother-in-law has now to pay taxes. I guess everything's dumped in his lap when the family started passing on, so that's it.
All right. Our next question will be for candidate two, three, and back to one. It says, "What are your thoughts about countywide fire districts, and should Iroquois County have paid fire departments and eliminate volunteer departments?"
Being one of your current County Commissioners, we worked diligently on fire funding solutions for three years to five years. We've got contracts redone with all the fire departments. Our fire departments in the county do a great job and a service for our communities. I can tell you with us redoing a countywide funding model that we just approved, we're trying to look at apparatus replacement, equipment replacement. We're trying to do that by volume to try to save money. The fire departments looking at, you know, if they want some additional things on some fire trucks or apparatuses, they're paying the differences for that. So I can tell you volunteerism is the issue that's going down. A lot of people don't have the flexibility to get off work and respond to these situations anymore, so some of the departments are having to have paid people to respond, and it's a reality of the times. And I can tell you, when we looked at the funding to have a paid countywide fire department, it would be double what it is now that we just approved the nine cent. It would, you know, it would cost the taxpayers double at least of what we're paying them that. So we're getting a bang for our buck, and we appreciate all they do. That's one of the elected officials.
All right. As Gene just said, there is a new countywide approved fire district. With that, though, I believe it will help address the needs of the personnel. You know, as our county continues to grow, there are needs to be met, and every citizen deserves to have a timely safety call, major. You're in a crisis situation, you need someone there in a timely manner. So with that, I believe the flexibility there to address the personnel and have that. But there is nothing like having our volunteer fire departments. They're the heart and soul of our community, and no matter what the type of person reaches out to a fire department, there is a way they can be involved in supporting the fire departments, whether it be just helping bring awareness to the need, to finding a way for them to be a part of this crucial pride in our community with the volunteers. It will always be something that we rely on, but with the countywide higher tax, you know, it's going to address some of the personnel issues to provide safety for residents.
Well, I think something is coming in the future, but right now we need to be careful. We, a lot of times, we run at things, and we need to walk at this one. We don't need to go out here and tell a lot of our volunteers, "You can't be a fireman anymore." I grew up as a volunteer fireman in a rural area, and then the fire department I was at now, now it's paid fire department down in Shebards. And it needs to be, and we've got things that need to happen in the future, but we don't need to start running out there and telling our volunteer firemen, "You can't be a fireman anymore." It's something that they know how to do, even though they have one to the big classes to be paid. But, and we've got a lot of fire departments in rural area that do one hundred fifty, two hundred calls a year, and you can't put one fireman out there. One fireman can't put out five. So, you know, you need a minimum of two and usually four. So when you start putting four, it's going to put a burden on the people in the rural area to pay that fire tax. So I don't think we're, I think we need to walk at that slow and figure it out, and then in the future, it will come to it. Thank you.
All right. Our next question is will be for candidate number five and four. What is the primary way you as a County Commissioner could do to help agriculture in Iroquois County?
I think I could help agriculture in Iroquois County by continuing to work with the County Farmland Preservation Board and adhering to our Farmland Protection Plan, but also a strict adherence to our 2030 Horizon Plan that was thoughtfully implemented by our Commissioners back in 2009. Urban development in Iroquois County needs to be kept and checked to protect the natural study of our county. This is simply the way.
So one thing is keeping taxes low. We can't lose our farmers. Taxes is always a burden. We're one of the lowest in the nine surrounding counties. I think going back to that tax credit, we've got to get in Raleigh and look at these tax credits. I sat at a meeting when Patrick McHenry came through town, and I heard the things that our federal government is doing to our farmers right here in Iroquois County. We have got to be a voice for our farmers. It is outstanding the things they do. Just hearing some of the things, I didn't realize all the things. I'll just tell you, I've learned more on this campaign trail than I've ever learned in any civic economics class. But our county is so rich in agriculture. We have to be, we have to protect it and not interfere with it. As a county, we have to let you guys do your job, but we do not want to interfere with what you guys are doing. I think we, as a county, can do that, and we can let you guys do that, and we can have our agriculture grow even more in this county. Also, looking at growth, keeping growth where it needs to be, especially in the southern end of the county, trying to keep that and preserving our agriculture in the northern end of the county. Thank you.
All right. Our next question will be for candidate three, one, and then two. Farmers have become increasingly concerned about the rise of unfounded nuisance lawsuits. What could you as a County Commissioner do to protect agriculture from nuisance lawsuits?
Yeah, I actually did a little bit more reading on that one. I didn't realize it was so prevalent, and it is in various areas. The one thing that I came up with was I found out there was media outlets that are actually funded by anti-agriculture advocacy groups. They will go back and dig up issues that are definitely unfounded on that one. So the key piece here is staying in touch with our state and federal lawmakers, watching the bills that are moving forward that could impact our farmers negatively. Definitely be aware, being in the restaurant business, we're familiar with protecting our farms and our farmers. We have some that are exclusively for our restaurant business, and if you stay on top of how bills are written, that kind of gives you heads up, but it is also keeping those connections with the folks we have already in place with our legislature and state. Thank you.
Well, I've worked real close with Senator Rick Jackson, if you all know him. He's one of the head guys, the head coach for a state in North Carolina. I've been involved with him on a couple farm bills, working with him on one right now for next year. And in 2019, we did get the farm bill passed with the nuisance law in there because there was a lot of trouble down eastern part with pigs, and that was a big thing. A lot of, if you don't know about it, a lot of lawyers in Salisbury were suing, trying to get money that was crazy. We got that taken care of. So our biggest thing is, is whenever people are moving into this area, we need to let them know, you know, because I hate to say it, but a lot of these, these real estate agents, they don't tell people about, you know, they've got a farm over there, and they're going to spread manure, and it smells. And, you know, it doesn't happen every day, but this does happen. We just had a development move in right next to the zoo, and we've already had two petitions filed against us from my neighbors, and I love my neighbors, but they just moved, this whole building just came in this year, and they're all against Zoo Tastic because they don't like the noise, they don't like the Christmas lights, they don't like the traffic, and now they don't like the smell that we're spreading manure on the backside. But, you know, I was there first, and it is farmland. Thank you.
As County Commissioners, our board has done resolutions to the state legislators, trying to get them to require the real estate industry to put on their disclosures, you know, when people are moving into ag business areas or anywhere near any kind of existing agriculture businesses, farms, whatever, to identify you may have to deal with sounds, smells, you know, people get up early and work late. And so a lot of people moving into this county that's not from maybe North Carolina or never been around agriculture may not realize that. But we are working diligently with our legislators to try to get this required and to help them avoid unnecessary nuisance regulations. Thank you.
All right. Our next question will go to candidate four and five. If elected as County Commissioner, what is the one area you would like the County Commission to focus on and why?
I think transportation's a key one because our county growing at the rate it is growing in the southern end and then also trying to get products out of Iroquois County to other areas, transportation is key. I know the county doesn't do roads, doesn't do sewer, doesn't do water, but we can lobby with our municipalities, we can lobby with our state legislature to get NCDOT to move forward on some of these projects that have been sitting here for God knows how long. Also, looking at our municipalities, I think the town of Morsel and the city of Statesville have done some good jobs with some projects, moving forward with projects on their own, and then waiting, and then getting DOT to pay them back for the project. You look at the different things in Morsel and in Statesville, I think we can lobby them to do that more, to get our roads to where they need to be, and we are a thoroughfare for a lot of things, so we need to keep our roads where they need to be to get things in and out of our county.
I'm just on a good point there, about transportation, things like that. I think our county's doing a very good job all around managing our taxes and our growth. At this time, I can say that there might be one specific area that needs attention. A little bit of everything in the county needs a little bit of work, but if elected to come on board with the ins and outs of the more specific operations of the county, I might be able to answer that question in more detail at this moment. I don't have much more to say. Explained a lot there also.
All right. We'll begin rotating back through, and our question is, question two. How do you feel, and this will be candidate one, two, and three, how do you feel about the current present use valuation program for farmland, and is it more of a tool to protect farmland or a drain on tax revenue in Iroquois County?
Well, I think that's one of our problems in Iroquois County. People don't understand from the southern end to the northern end, and it's a shame that we're north and south, but that's the way it is. We have to preserve that agriculture. That's what makes Iroquois County, Iroquois County. The people don't understand that farmland, you know, we give them the break on the taxes because they don't have infrastructure. They don't have, all these kids, you know, if you've got five hundred acres down south, you're going to have, you know, a thousand kids going to school up there. They've got one or two kids going to school. We don't have the, you know, the fire department stuff up there because we don't have all the houses there on their land. We don't have the road maintenance up there because we don't have that much traffic up there. So, you know, this is a reason we give the farmers a break. I farm about three hundred to, well, three hundred and fifty acres, and, you know, if I didn't have that break, I wouldn't be able to do it. If, some of y'all don't know what it costs to plant corn, you know, it's costing about four hundred dollars an acre to put in corn. If they have a pretty good year, they're going to make four hundred and fifty dollars. That's fifty dollars. When we start taking out taxes, you know, they're going to end up with thirty dollars. If they have a good year, a real good year, you know, they might make six hundred. Then you've got your years that we come in and we have a drought, and we get about thirty, forty bushels to the acre, and they're going to lose, and they take that profit out for the next three years. We cannot break our farmers. We've got to do whatever we can to preserve them.
It's definitely a tool to protect the farmland. Our board is the board that started the petition or resolution with the legislators before Jeff went to replace Rena Turner in Raleigh to try to get farm credits for equipment. And when I was in Washington, and I invited Patrick McHenry here, and Mr. Renner hosted him at Dupree, and part of that is, is, you know, we're getting Representative Henry back, and hopefully he'll be reelected as well. We've got to get our legislators working from a local level to the state level to the federal level to get on the same page advocating for Iroquois County, protecting our diverse county, the farmers, our farmland, getting grant funding back where we can, avoiding nuisance-type regulations and burdens from regulations, and we've got to protect our number-one industry in the county, which is agriculture. We're trying to, in that meeting with Patrick McHenry, we talked about trying to get Michelle Obama rules out of our schools and get milk back in our schools. And so that would really open up markets for our dairy farmers. The USMCA that President Trump just opened up, you know, that will open up exports for the dairy industry, especially in North Carolina and the United States. So we are advocating for all those things as elected officials, and it does take a team and a network of people from local to state to federal. Thank you.
Well, we're definitely all in a grants on a thing, a tool. We live in agriculture neighborhood, can't think of any else I would prefer to live. And I oftentimes hear neighbors talking, and they share their concerns, of course, with rising property taxes. It is a tool, and it enables them to work off of their land. We as well have a piece of our property in that, so you have to have that. There is no way that you can have the offset and deal with the cost of regular property tax. It wouldn't be feasible, and I appreciate the opportunity. That also covers the horticulture. It covers forest land, and I believe that opens up opportunity. I would love to be able to see, we've lost two of our local greenhouses recently. That would be an opportunity to bring some of that back, that piece back in there. Buy local, grow local. Those are key pieces that we need to speak to toward even toward our public health, involving the school system in that piece, too, educating them on opportunities, sending our kids to get excited about agriculture business. It is just a key piece of it. I would hold it all together. It's the land. They are not making any more land. This is just part of it. So it is, it's key. It's definitely a tool. Thank you.
All right. The next question will be candidate four and five. What are your thoughts about countywide fire districts? Should Iroquois County have paid fire departments and eliminate volunteer fire departments?
Like they've already said, as our County Commissioner voted on this, and I think it was a good thing with our countywide fire districts, it's equity across the
All right, the next question will be candidate four and five. What are your thoughts about countywide fire districts? Should Iroquois County have paid fire departments and eliminate volunteer fire departments?
Like they've already said, as our county commissioner voted on this, and I think it was a good thing with our countywide fire districts, um, it's equity across the county. Um, each department does a great job, no matter if they go five miles down the road for a call or if they go half a mile down the road to the call. Or if it takes 10 minutes or 15 minutes based on where you're at. I think it, it builds the, the opportunity that some of these departments that have not had the funding in the past to get a new truck, to get new, uh, turnout here, to get different things. It's that opportunity that they can replace that and, and get to where they need to be for ISO ratings and everything of that nature. The other thing is volunteers, um, I was with Shepherd's Fire Department for six and a half years. As a junior fireman, my dad's been on the board for quite some time as well with Shepherd's. Volunteers, we are, we're lacking volunteers in this county. We need to go back to the camaraderie ship of the volunteer fire departments that there's no infighting and all this different technology and all these things that people don't have. And we, we just need to go back to the camaraderie ship of getting back to going on a call and, and enjoying the, the brotherhood of one another, um, at the calls. And everything of the nature with training and different things with that. So, um, I think we need to stay volunteer, um, because it brings just something to this county with volunteers. Thank you.
I think Ryan stole my answers to my questions. He covered about everything I want to say. I, I think countywide fire district is a good idea in the long run. It will add benefits to smaller fire departments that are struggling to keep up with state and federal standards for equipment that must be replaced. Whether the air packs, tanks, turnout gear, whatever, I think it's inevitable with departments will have to be paid positions in the future. Due to growth, jobs, et cetera, larger businesses simply won't allow volunteers to come out and fight the fire. Countywide district will allow the county to start future plans with salaries and benefits for, uh, paid personnel. I, I do know I have visited several fire departments and I know that we're, just, just looking at the fire maps, the hydro maps and everything. We, we've got one fire department that serves, um, two counties, the Iroquois side, they only have like three working fire hydrants. Uh, and one of those has very little pressure. So things like that, that, um, that the county can work with them and use some of this money to, um, either install pumps or whatever to get water pressure to the north end of the county would be a real benefit.
All right, our next question will be for candidate two, three, and one. It says, what is the primary way that you as a county commissioner could do to help agriculture in Iroquois County?
As mentioned before, uh, being an elected official, I served on the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, I'm a District 12 rep, which I represent eight counties in this region. So that puts me in Washington and Raleigh advocating for Iroquois County. The way we help our farmers like we're doing is to advocate and, and to protect, uh, the nuisances, the regulations, get those off your backs. Protect your farmland, uh, give you breaks where we can on taxes, equipment, on, uh, prices of your, uh, property taxes, uh, for your land that you're using. And just like we did before when I asked Patrick McHenry to come here and Mr. Reniger, uh, hosted him, we've got to have people in front of you guys to hear directly from you, what are the issues facing you? How can we as elected officials, locally, state and federal, help you to be successful? When I started as county commissioner, there were over 200 dairy farmers in this county. Today, I think there's maybe what, 21? And, and so it, it, we've taken a hit, and that's our leading industry, not only in Iroquois County, but North Carolina. So we've got to do a better job of, uh, protecting you, and that's, that's how I as elected official, every day fight for you, to protect you and keep regulations off your back.
I have to admit, I like the way this question is asked, because it said, what would you, meaning I, what would I primarily do? And this is one of the things that I like to break to the table is my enthusiasm, my ability to get people motivated and excited about things. And as a matter of fact, I was able to meet with Nancy and the Cooperative Extension Group, what a team, what a team of folks, actually, or even a lot of things in the community. And with that, several months back, I had an opportunity to meet with Andrea, with, talking with the whole nutrition piece. So I was interested in learning more, and with that, if I want to learn more, I think our citizens should know more. So they're going to be my guests on my radio show, Why Should I Care, next Thursday at 8:00 AM. And with that is a way to touch more people in the community. If we get the word out there and get people excited about agriculture, excited about our farmers, they're going to get behind it and support and educate. Get it in the schools, I'm serious about this, we have got to get these programs, 4H has it program, I'm talking about, um, we've got Kelly and Taylor that go in the school system. They left in the meeting to go to the school and educate. Let's talk about things and as well, I would be glad to continue to work with the commissioners on those pieces with, uh, regulations and all, being aware of that one. Let's get the community excited all across the board, upper, middle, lower, let's talk about agriculture. I kind of like it myself, I'd like to eat it. Thank you.
There's a lot of different ways we can do things here in Iroquois County. When I grew up in Iroquois County, or still here, I, uh, Iroquois County was the largest dairy county in the state of North Carolina. And I was always proud, I worked for Purion Mills for years, I was the dairy nutritionist. So I was involved with the dairies and I loved, wanted to place a telephone, we had the largest dairy county in the state. Today, that doesn't mean anything because we still might be the largest dairy county in the state, but we're talking about a tenth of the amount of animals that we have. We've got to, and, and we can't bring that back. I mean, even the dairy farmers, they know things have changed and things do change. We have to work at different things to, to make things work. You know, last year I worked with the, uh, 2016, I'm sorry, I worked on the, uh, I wanted to do farm programs here in the state of North Carolina. Then we brought deer farming here, deer farming is going to be a thing in the future. We, we just got that done in 16 and, and Brett Jackson and I worked on that, we got it passed and Tom Smith out of Salisbury. But, you know, you can take a tenth of the amount of land and make the same amount of money. So that's what they do in some of those states like Ohio, if you go to a place up there where land's thirty some thousand dollars an acre. These, these Amish people, they've tried to figure out, how can we make our living on 10 acres instead of 100 acres? Because they can't afford to buy $38,000, uh, an acre of land. So we have to make sure that our farmers, we, we make it work for them with the zoning, we'll go back to zoning, we can't let that be taken, taken over by that. We've got to make sure that we keep our taxes low, taxes are a big thing here in Iroquois County for, for the farmers. And, uh, we, we've just got to work at every single thing that we can figure out to keep, uh, keep their income coming in. Thank you.
All right, our next question is for candidate, uh, five and four. It says, farmers have become increasingly concerned about the rise of unfounded nuisance lawsuits. What could you as a county commissioner do to protect agriculture from nuisance lawsuits?
Again, like Scotty and Gene both touched on this subject very well. Uh, most nuisance lawsuits that I'm familiar with, I've talked with some commissioners about, involves development here around farms. One way that can be addressed is to continue working with a planning board to be sure that someone willing to develop property is well informed as to the zoning requirements, uh, that are in place. But the rezoning requests are well scrutinized, so there's no surprises after properties are purchased.
I think a key thing is land use and zoning. Um, if we are, I'm, I'm key on that is keeping our land use where it is, especially in the northern, northern part of the county. Also, one thing is looking at a farming district as a zoning district, it's voluntary for farmers to go into that they would be not held liable for nuisance lawsuits. Um, we have some surrounding counties that have done that and those farmers have, have thrived in that and have not had some nuisance lawsuits. So I think we need to bring that to Iroquois County and can push that forward, um, so we're not having, uh, the nuisance lawsuits coming across. Um, the other thing is, um, we really need to push with zoning on, if you're going to build a, a subdivision next to a farm, you're going to drive right past that farm, you know it's there, you know it's going to smell, you know it's, there's different things, there's going to be noise. Making sure these folks are aware of that, um, as they were trying to build these things, so, thank you.
All right, our next question is, uh, for candidate three, one, and two. If elected as county commissioner, what is the one area you would like the county commission to focus on and why?
All right, when you say one area, that's kind of tough because everything is so interwoven. Diversification, I believe is key with this, whether it be for our farmers to go ahead and continue looking at ways to diversify their farm. But as for the county too, that is very important to have diversification, um, and with that, you can involve nonprofits. They are able to do a lot of heavy lifting, encouraging, just working together as a team, so I'd like to bring that piece. Have us all working toward the success for the, uh, for the county. Um, that's just preparing students, preparing citizens, you know, it's just key, it's teamwork on this, on a lot of these issues. And just continuing the conversation and having us all work for the benefit of the whole county. Thank you.
One of my biggest things I've seen over the years is, uh, is I've worked more and more into, uh, politics. You know, years ago, as we grew up, we think we know everything, and I thought I did too, but I've learned a lot of things in politics. And I've learned Iroquois County, we have some problems here. We, uh, we, we treat different groups differently, we're, we're a diversified county. We need to make sure that our, our schools, our farming, you know, our industry, that we all work together, Morseville, Stateville, uh, Iroquois County. That we, we need commissioners that can go talk, we can go down Morseville and talk. You know, every time I talk to somebody, they say, well, I don't want to talk to those guys because we don't get along. That's, that's got to be, we've got to get that taken care of. We need to be able to talk to the school board, I'm really good friends with Martin Page, and we've talked about this several times. Martin thinks that, uh, that, you know, everybody's against him when he's doing a great job, a super great job. And he's got one of the hardest jobs in the county, we think our county, he's got a hard job, hard job. You know, Martin just had a heart attack the other day, I told him it was, uh, it was this politics. But we need to be sure that we can talk to all these guys. And, and one of the main things too is, is when it comes back to agriculture, this is agriculture forum. You know, I don't think people realize how important it is, if we don't keep our farming in Iroquois County, we're not Iroquois County anymore, we've become a hub for Charlotte. And I don't think any of us want to be a hub for Charlotte, we've already seen Morseville and Cranes, they're a hub for Charlotte now, and we can't do that to us. Charlotte's trying to take over Morseville right now, we cannot let that company bother. Thank you.
One of the things as an elected official, sometimes, you know, when you're sitting in the seat looking out, the view changes. So what I'd like to see the county commissioners do is continue focusing on better communication. Our job to, as elected officials, to you guys, is get you the who, when, why, where, how much, and what our options are. I tell people all the time, I'd like as elected official to make sure you know what our options are, what our choices are, and why we made the decision we made. Our boards have made a decision unanimously since I've been on the board on every budget, every allocation of money, money. Asking the voters to consider bond funding for school construction because a bond, if approved, allows us to borrow money on longer terms, less interest rate. Sometimes in our seats, we have to do things we don't want to do. But US taxpayers need the facts and information, so we have to do a better job of getting the information to you, what we're doing, why we're doing it. I feel like the feedback I get at the polls, working the polls, is, uh, more people that they get the details, they don't particularly mind investing in the things that we are investing in. They just need to understand what we're doing and why, because the information is invaluable. Uh, because in, in a growing county, we're a top 10 county in the state of North Carolina, and in a growing county, you have growing pains. So like any business as you grow, you have to invest in employees, equipment, and other things. So Iroquois County, we have issues other counties would love to have. We have a, a, a balanced growth, and so all of these issues are a positive to our citizens, so I've been cut off. Thank you.
All right, our last question of the evening is for candidate four and five. Education is one of the core functions of our government. Do you believe our schools are funded adequately at the local level that provides a proper education for our children? Are there alternative sources of funding that could be utilized in the future for Iroquois County?
Education's 54% of our budget, um, at a local level. We're one of the top funded based on budgets, um, as a county level, I think at the state level is where we need to go. Um, we're a tier three county, which means we're a rich county, and that's based on the tax base in the southern end of the county. We need to go back and look at this tier structure and see how we can do it by zip code, do it by regions. Because nothing against it is, what Morseville has and what North Iroquois has is two totally different things. Um, and we need to look at that tier structure. I think if we can get some good lieutenant governor candidates in there, um, we can make some things happen with education. Uh, also, the other thing is the state has so many mandates on their state funds when it comes to the school system. If we could get the state to loosen some of those mandates so we could use those funds for different things than what their mandate requires us, we could make some things happen with the state funds. But I'll tell you, some of the state funds, all it can be used for is the cafeteria, or all it could be used for is TAs. We can't use some of that funds that is left over that we could go to buildings or different, uh, projects that we could do within the school. I think locally, we do a good job of that, I think we need to go to the state and, and look at those mandates and the tier structure and look at getting a restructuring of that. Thank you.
I agree with Ryan about everything you said there, it was part of my answer also. I do feel on the, uh, local level, the school system here in Iroquois County is actively funded by the taxpayers to provide educational instruction along with academics and, uh, extra programs. The county goes above what's required by state statutes, statute to provide for these programs. Our sources for funds for the future, I'd like to see our legislature revisit our, our lottery system. Try to return it back to what the state sold us like, um, several years back. I'd like to see more funding from the state to provide, uh, more for these programs. By state statute, the county is only responsible for the infrastructure and real estate of our system.
All right, that concludes our questions. Uh, we're going to give the candidates one minute to prepare a two-minute, uh, closing statement, and we will begin those in reversal, or we'll start with Raymond and work back to Scotty, so. While they're preparing them, I want to thank y'all for coming out this evening. And I, I'm sure, uh, we thank these candidates for, for, uh, answering their questions. And I'm sure you all have more questions to ask them, and I encourage you to, to ask each and every one of these candidates your follow-up questions as, as we conclude tonight. I know it's bad weather and everybody wants to get out, but, uh, I'm sure they'll be willing to stick around for just a few minutes and, uh, answer a couple of follow-up questions. With that, if Raymond, if you're ready, we'll begin with you.
I'm ready. Again, I need to remember that, um, I can say, uh, as an 18-year county employee, became interested in, uh, watching commissioners work and how the county operated. I can probably say that, uh, for the last three years, I have attended a majority of the county commissioner meetings. It's a whole lot more than half of our candidates can say. Back in May, our budget sessions that the county, uh, provides, it's, it's open to the public. It's advertised in the paper, it explains why our budget, uh, is in rubber down. They take every round, all the way through, explain what it's for. Gene, Gene understands this, other than Gene, uh, out of 185,000 people in Iroquois County, does, uh, anybody know how many, how many people showed up for this budget session? You might want to take a guess. One. You might want to take a guess who that one was. I'd say other than Gene and newspaper related, and of course, Sherrod and one other that's there, they had to be there for the department. I feel like I've got to lay it up on, uh, most of our candidates, I may not understand everything about the budget, but I'm really working hard and trying to understand it. Talking to people, uh, love to work the county, you know, talking to people, whether it be in Morseville, uh, or the very northeast corner of Turkey Foot. Uh, I can get along with anybody as long as they can get along with me. So if you consider me, uh, I feel a lot.
First, I want to say thank you to the Farm Bureau for allowing us to have this opportunity just to give a little bit of insight on each of us. Saw this a little bit earlier, we've had, as of yesterday, yesterday evening, we've only had 3,000 citizens vote in early voting. We're already halfway through that, 3,000 citizens have voted. We have to get people out to vote, we need the enthusiasm of some of the candidates that are on this, uh, up here that can make this county enthusiastic again, to get people to vote, to get people to be involved in county politics. I'll tell you, today's, it's, everything's virtual, everything's technology. I've seen every single county commission meeting for the last two and a half years because it's able to be on string. Nothing against it, those seats at the county commission meeting aren't very pleasant, uh, for some of the longer meetings, so. Uh, but I'm just a private citizen trying to make a difference in this community. It is, uh, something I love about Iroquois County, I truly loved my time here, we lived in Wisconsin, I don't like the snow. But I do love Iroquois County and being here. We have to have people that are invested in our community, um, with many, uh, connections with nonprofits. Um, and with my time with different organizations, we can make a difference. But as you see, there's only, I think I counted a little bit earlier, there's less than 40 people here tonight that are invested in this county to make the decision of who's going to make the decision on our taxes. That's a scary thought. That's a scary thought. We have to get people back involved and back educated about the folks that are running for our political office in this county. Again, Farm Bureau, you guys do a great job. Our farmers do a great job. We need to keep agriculture number one in this county. I think our second thing is education. We have to get education back where it needs to be in this county. We have some failing schools that we need to get back passing and we need to support our school system, support our teachers, and support our parents at home. Thank you again for your time and thank you to all the other candidates.
All right. Well, number one, thank y'all for sitting here, listening, and I see some people taking notes. So, this is important to me. This was not something that I decided unlightly. We talked it as a family. This is taking on an endeavor, an investment, our family to be in a public office. Since I've been here for quite some time, I've lined things up to where this is time for me to move forward. My days are spent in the community. I hear the needs. I see the needs. I work with people on a daily basis, all across the county, all across from agriculture to law enforcement, to school systems, to the health industry. The needs are at every level. And when you have the conversations face to face, you get real input. It is very important to me to embrace the people of this community, to hear and have the conversation, be there, move forward, make decisions, not just talk about it. Awareness is great, but we need some action. So, let's keep that moving forward. With that, you can take a look at my website if you would please. It is needneader.com, need N-E-A-D-E-R dot com. I put information out there. You can reach back out to me. This, I'll keep it going with blogs and information, but this is very important. The people of this community matter, each and every one of you. And somebody said, why would you want to do this? Because I care. I genuinely care about each and every person, no matter where you live, what you do, it matters. I care about the future of our generations, from the farming to the hardworking people. We see a need for a workforce to be strong. We struggle to find people that are ready to work. We've got to look at these things. This is key. We've got to evaluate our next generations to be a part of the whole part of Iroquois County, every part of it. Thank you all.
Again, thank you for having this event and allowing us to come before the people. Thank you for coming out tonight. As one of your existing county commissioners, it's an honor to serve you. As I said before, you know, we have challenges. We have 25 county departments, 19 fire departments, three educational entities we help fund. And everybody here tonight talked about the network from local to state to federal advocacy for burdens and nuisance lawsuits, regulations. We're already doing those things. We're, you know, we have a legislator now that used to be a county commissioner, helped preventing unfunded mandates coming down. The sheriff runs one of our 25 departments in the county. He has a growing county. Crime is going up. We're building a jail that's almost finished. Unfortunately, we're having to build a jail. That's society. We're building a, we just finished the emergency management building. We're, our obligations and responsibilities as county commissioners are construction for schools. But, you know, there again, our job is to get you guys the data and information in a growing county. The growth in the county requires more houses, more people. The fire departments are responding more now to medical calls than fire calls, but they have to have the equipment and the personnel to do that. It costs money to buy both and pay for both. So, as elected official, getting you the information and telling you guys the who, when, why, and where, our seat is always challenging. Some of our solutions are not good solutions. We just have to pick the better one and the best way for our taxpayers. We have a balanced growth county. We have a lot of challenges. Other counties would love to have the problems we have in Iroquois County, being a top 10 economic county. So, please get the information before you judge the decisions that we make. We work very hard for you guys and those people that are elected this time to represent as county commissioners in the future, they will have to face the same challenges and they're not always easy. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve you as one of the county commissioners.
Well, my reason for running the county commissioner, I get this asked every day. Of course, my wife, things are crazy and I might be, but, you know, everybody up here, their hearts in it and we've all got things that we can do. You know, I'm getting to the age that I can retire in a couple more years, but my heart's in it and I've got, I'm invested in Iroquois County. I've got kids in Iroquois County schools. I've got two in the IB school. I've got one in Trump in the middle school getting ready to go to South Iroquois High School. The schools are very important to me and I get a lot of feedback from people that think I don't care about schools. I'm not stupid. I know we're, I know we need to go build. I know we've got to take care of our kids. I know we've got to take care of our teachers. I love our Iroquois County teachers. I promise you, I love our teachers in state of North Carolina. But, you know, as a candidate, I'm a general contractor, been a general contractor since '87. I think it puts me up a little higher in fact that I know how to get things done. I've built multi-million dollar buildings and up to $50 million. So, I know how to get things done a little bit. You know, I know how to settle these contractors. I know how to tell them, guys, we got to do it like this. We've got to have two more schools like right now. One, we need, we should already start building a middle school. I mean, it's got to be done right now. And me as a county commissioner, you know, I'd love to sit with those guys and talk to them a little bit and say, guys, you know, it's only a cost, I already know what things cost. You know, I'm a farmer. So, I know everything, not everything about farming, nobody knows anything about farming. But God controls most of the farming. But they, you know, we rely on him to give us our rain and our dry weather. But, you know, I know a little bit, I'm controversial, I don't know a little bit about both of those. I am a businessman. I've been a businessman pretty much all my life. I've only really worked for one company in my whole life. So, I've worked for myself and I've done pretty well for myself. So, I think that makes me a good candidate for Iroquois County Commissioner. Thank you, guys.
Let's give our candidates a big hand. I failed to thank our sound man. Max James was gracious enough to come out and set up our microphones and we thank you for that.
And thank the North Carolina Department of Agriculture for that stuff.
All right. Again, on behalf of our board, we would like to thank y'all for coming out. I think we had a very informative forum here tonight. Certainly, certainly there are other questions to ask these folks and I encourage you to do so. We tried to be, we tried to ask questions that were relevant to our county and our industry and I think we did and I thank you for your answers. And once again, I'd just like to thank y'all for coming out and that concludes our forum. And we have a lot of refreshments out there. Help yourself to those. Thank you, Scott.